I'm Emily Grego, I'm President and CEO at the San Leandro Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank all of you and welcome you to our Government Affairs Roundtable. This is our Meet the Candidates forum. This is for District 4 today, so we are going to have Chris Bama with us from 3:30 to 4 o'clock. And then Chris will go away, and our next guest will be Fred Simon from 4 to 4:30. So I also want to let everybody know that the San Leandro Chamber does have a political action committee. And the Chamber Political Action Committee will endorse and contribute, will do the endorsement and contributions to candidates. So we are just providing the platform so that all of our Chamber members and any community members that are out there joining us today can get to know the candidates who are running. A lot of times in the past, we've done this with the League of Women Voters, who are so awesome at doing this, so I hope I've learned a few things from them as we move forward. So thank you all for being here. I'm going to introduce Natasha Fernandez. She's our Events and Marketing Manager here at the Chamber, and she's got a few housekeeping rules for us as we go through the next half hour. So Natasha?
Got to unmute myself. Thank you for being with us today. As we go through, we are going to take any questions in the chat. If you're on your desktop, your chat should be located at the bottom of your screen, right in the middle, a little box that says "Chat." If you're on your mobile device, your chat would be located, you have to click the three dots in the bottom right-hand corner, and it should open up a menu that has your chat in there. So we'll take these, your questions, and ask them of Chris specifically in the order that they come in. If you feel like your question hasn't been answered, or you have a follow-up, please enter it again, or enter the follow-up into the chat. And again, we'll take it in the order they come in. Chris will have two minutes to answer each question. I'll be running a timer on my end. Chris, no disrespect, we will put you on mute at the end of those two minutes, just to make it really clean there, and jump into the next question. If we have time at the end, once all the questions seem to have been asked, if there's time to follow up on anything, we'll open that up to you. Chris?
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. You will all remain on mute. Thank you for being here.
Thank you Natasha. Thank you for pulling all of this together and being so good about the timer and all the mute stuff. So I appreciate you. Thank you for doing all of that. So again, welcome, and our first guest today is Chris Bama. Chris Bama is a resident of San Leandro, and he is also a business owner. His business has been a longtime Chamber member, so thank you for that, Chris. We appreciate that very much. And to get things started, I'm going to give you the first, you know, three minutes to let everybody know a little bit about who you are and what brought you to run for City Council here in San Leandro.
Okay, first of all, the business belongs to my father. Quentin Bama is the owner. I work for my dad. I have three children, the two that attend Washington Manor Middle School and one that attends Arroyo High School. I've been a resident of San Leandro since 1999, I believe. I moved into the city. Been coming here since the late 70s when my parents bought the business. I got involved with politics because of school district issues that I had. I had communications issues. And I didn't really understand the boundaries and the districts for the school districts and the city and whatnot. So that's pretty much what got me involved with city politics, I guess. And then just deciding that I think I wanted to be involved with, moving forward with how the city plans for the future. Because I'm going to be here. I know I'm going to be here. My daughters probably will be close by, if not in the city. So I'm thinking about my grandchildren and, you know, where they're going to grow up and how their lives are going to be affected by the choices that we make today and tomorrow. So that's pretty much what got me involved with politics. It's been almost three years now since I've really pursued wanting to get involved, going to meetings, listening, a lot of listening. You know, I know I have a lot to learn. I'm just want to be involved, really.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that. So right now, I've got a few questions for you, Chris. And just a reminder to everybody, when you've got a question that you want him to answer, type it in your chat, and I'm going to be checking the chat throughout the half an hour that we have here with Chris. So my first question for you, Chris, is: As development happens in our city, whether it's residential or commercial, there are some residents who are upset and concerned that development will change the character of the city or of a neighborhood, as well as stressing the current infrastructure that we have in place. What are your thoughts about the city growing with the idea that perhaps it does change?
Um, I think we have to grow in order to keep up with the population growth. I'm in favor of the big projects that I've heard about around my area, namely the Bay Fair Transit Oriented Development, I believe it's called. The Bay Fair Mall, which has been, you know, to me, pretty much extinct for the past 10 years. I'd like to see that project get moving. The Marina Project, I'm not really for all that housing down at the Marina. I'd rather see something else happen down there. But again, we have to provide for what's needed in the city. That project's been in the works for a long time, from what I understand. So I'd like to be part of seeing that actually breaking ground and moving. The other one that concerns me is the one in San Lorenzo, across from the San Lorenzo Theater, I believe. Because that's going to be San Lorenzo School District also. It's really close to my business, where I work, where my home is. That's going to have a lot of effect on, you know, this side of San Leandro. So three big developments that I see that should be moving forward, not so much the little ones in the smaller neighborhoods. I'm not real in favor of those. I like to try to keep the neighborhoods as neighborhoods. You know, single-family homes, front yards, backyards. That's just my personal feeling. So the infrastructure definitely needs some help. I see a lot of work going on the past couple of years with the infrastructure, so that's good. I just think we need to be more proactive than reactive on what our infrastructure needs are.
Okay, thank you. We did get, we did get a question from one of our members. It was emailed to us earlier, and I'll just read it exactly as it was typed. It says, "Small businesses in San Leandro are suffering. There's a shortage of employees. There's been shoplifting. There's theft. There's homelessness. What are some of your ideas to resolve these issues?"
Um, the homelessness issue hits me pretty good because, you know, I've been dealing with that right behind our business and all along the businesses that I shop at, and I have shopped at for a long time. One of the ideas that I had was some of the vacant land that I've seen around town. Giving these people an area where they can kind of feel like it's their own, you know, and giving them a nice tent or some sort of shelter where they have a bathroom, maybe even lockers where they can lock up some of their valuables, portable showers, things like that. I mean, I don't really know the exact right answer. I'm just trying to brainstorm and give them options, you know, because the options that they're given right now don't appeal to them. They don't want those, that type of help, I guess. So I just feel like they need an option so the residents can have an option where we don't have to deal with, you know, people taking over land and then trashing it. Because that's what's happening. It's becoming trash dumps, trash heaps. And, you know, it gets cleaned up, but now it's already ruined. The land's ruined. So I think we need to have a special area that they're allowed to do that in, but make it illegal for them to be anywhere else in the city doing that type of thing. You know, I just, it's getting to the point where it's getting out of control. You know, I see it every day at work, and I know other people in the city that see it every day at work, and then they go home, and it's behind their home too. So, you know, I don't want it behind my home, is what I'm getting at. It's already behind my work, which is kind of like home because I spend more time there than I do at my residence. But it's just, I don't see that they have any options right now, you know, other than refusing the medical or mental health.
All right, Chris, that was the time on that one. Thank you for that.
That was, that was good Natasha. You're keeping up with the time really well. I don't have another question in the chat, so if anybody's got questions, please make sure to put them in the chat. But I've got another question for you. So there is always the topic of recruiting new businesses to San Leandro. If you were that potential new business and you drove into San Leandro for the first time ever, what would you see that would make you want to have your business here? And what would be the drawbacks?
Um, what I like about San Leandro and having a family business here is all the different options of businesses that there are. No matter what it is that you're working on or what you need to get done, there's probably a business in San Leandro city limits that can take care of your needs. Whether it be big business or small family-owned businesses, you know, mom-and-pop shops. I try to do businesses with all these businesses. So being a new business owner coming into the city, I think a lot of the tech industry that is big right now with San Leandro and the high-speed internet loop that they have and the new tech campus, you know, that's very, I think, appealing to new businesses or even established businesses that may want to relocate, close to BART, things like that. Also with the new warehouses being built, or that have been built recently, especially at, what was that, Washington and Floresta. You know, those are, I think, good attractions for companies that want to start a business. They can start from scratch with a new building and, you know, set it up the way they want. So I like the way that the city's moving. I just think we need to move on some of the bigger projects that have been talked about for a long time.
And what would some of the drawbacks be?
Um, the drawbacks? You know, it's, if you're, if you're running a business that where you have to move in and out, you know, like with actual traffic, cars, trucks, whatever, the traffic in San Leandro is not the greatest, you know, trying to maneuver around, especially if you have to have big trucks, you know, it's going to be logistically, you know, hard trying to navigate through the city. But other than that, I think San Leandro is a great location to have a business. You're centrally located in the Bay Area. From San Leandro, you can go, you know, any direction you want to go. Across the bay, down south to San Jose, up north. You can head east, you know, over into the valley. So I think of San Leandro as the epicenter of the Bay Area is what I always tell people that don't know the Bay Area.
Yeah, I think, I think we agree. We do have wonderful locations, so that is such a gift to San Leandro. So I've got a question from one of our guests here. Says, "If you could direct 1.7 million in the city's budget, what would your priority be? Where do you think money can make the most difference?"
Um, that's a great question. I think that with $1.7 million, you know, what, what problem do you want to tackle? The, the money, can that be spent on infrastructure? Can that be spent on recreation, you know? Is it, does all the money get to go into one spot, or do we break it up? The, my kids learned to swim at the Washington Manor Pool. I've heard, you know, talk about, you know, redoing that pool or, or adding an Olympic-sized pool or a half-size pool. I'd like to see something like that happen, especially with the loss of the Manor Bowl. We're losing recreational things for children to do. I just think that we need to have better options for everybody, not, not just the, the income that we need to keep the city financially stable. I think we need to be more considerate of what the residents want and what the residents need more than, you know, I know helping the city is going to help the residents, but I think we need to listen to the residents more and get their feedback on where they'd like to see the money spent, really. You know, I've been here 20 years. I stay in a little bubble within a mile and a half, two-mile radius. Some of these people live here 40, 50 years. They may have better ideas, you know, and things that they want to get done. I'd like to hear those.
Okay, thank you. Another question from one of our guests is, "If you are elected, what will your principal focus be during your first year?"
Um, I think my, my biggest focus is getting all the schools within the San Leandro city limits into the San Leandro School District and aligning the districts, the school district boundaries with the city council boundaries. That would be my main focus, and I think that would be my focus throughout my tenure if I get elected. I just think that that makes sense. I don't know why. It's been like that for 50 or 60 years, I guess. I don't really understand it. But I think I have a better understanding of it now, and I would like to see it changed unless somebody could give me a reason why it needs to stay, stay the way that it is.
Okay, thank you. And we have another question for you. This is, "Mr. Bama, talk about collaboration with business partners where you had to negotiate a deal. How would you collaborate with an eye to improving the overall business without compromising your standards?"
Um, collaboration with business partners? I think I already have some collaboration with business partners as far as sharing business, you know. People, people come to me because they have issues, you know, even if it's not an automobile-related issue just because of the connections that we have, because everybody has a car or a truck or a piece of equipment. So things happen, accidents happens. I'm not real big on negotiating deals. I'm more of a facilitator of the work that, you know, needs to be done. You know, I come into a project, I can get the people together that need to get the job done in the best possible way, the quickest way. I feel like that's part of my strengths. Organizational skills to negotiation. I haven't really had to negotiate much. So I don't really have those type of, of background or skill, so it's hard for me to answer that question.
Okay. Our next question is, "With the downturn in the economy and sales tax revenue down for the city, what ideas do you have to increase revenue and preserve city services?"
Well, I don't know, you know, like I said, I don't know the inner workings of government and how all the money flows and things like that. But some of the things that I had thought about, which would increase city revenue, would be to incorporate some or all of the incorporated areas that border San Leandro. Ashland, Cherryland, San Lorenzo. That would bring in more revenue, more, a lot more businesses. It would give those areas an opportunity to have a police force, a represented police force. We could expand the San Leandro Police Force. Put, put a police station on this side of 880 Freeway, which is like a multi-jurisdictional type of location. You know, sheriff, police department, BART police, you know, fire department, paramedics. You know, it's a, it's a station, you know, and somewhere close to the 238-880 interchange. That way, you know, all the agencies can, can work together and have a central location and give these people more representation and work on that infrastructure in those areas. Because that's, in my opinion, really bad. So, you know, and like I said, I, I don't understand all the inner workings of how that stuff operates. I'm looking to learn and, and get involved. But those are, that's just one of the ideas that I have.
Okay. So we've got about 10 more minutes. So if anybody else has questions and you want to put them in the chat, that would be great. I have another question for you. So with there not being that much land to develop on in San Leandro, what's your position on height limits of new structures in our city?
Um, depending on where they're at. So for instance, the Manor Bowl project, three-story townhomes, you know, in the middle of one-story homes doesn't really appeal to me. I don't really agree with it. You know, but like a three, four, five-story building at the Bay Fair location, you know, I think there's enough area to where it's not going to cast shadows on existing businesses, existing residents that's going to, you know, cause an issue with them, you know, complaining. So I, I think it just depends on where the location is, really, on, on the height. I don't, you know, in San Leandro, at least in the, in the neighborhoods, Washington Manor and other neighborhoods that I drive through, I don't like to see anything over two stories. That's just my personal beliefs, you know. But again, I understand the housing issue that we have. So if it needs to be done, I guess, if it's okay with the residents and the people that are surrounding the area, I would be okay with it. But my personal feeling is I'm not, I'm not okay with anything over two, two stories in residential areas.
Okay, thank you. So the next question is, you know, we know, we all know the importance of business in our city, the jobs that they create, the sales tax and other fees they generate. Of course, the spirit and the energy of this city to entice visitors and shoppers with the different businesses. Businesses are truly the driving force of our community. With so many businesses affected by the pandemic, what can we all learn to be of better assistance to the business community? And how can these lessons be put in motion now rather than later?
Uh, that's, that's a great question. The, the thing that I've been trying to do myself is just shop at small businesses, if at all possible. I don't really know how to, you know, help a business survive in a situation like this. I can't imagine having to lay off your employees and send them home and tell them that, you know, you're not going to be able to give them a paycheck anymore. It just scares me to think that, you know, it's close for, it's close like that for everybody. So I don't really have the answer for that. I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question. I really, I really don't. I mean, the same, I'm asking myself that question.
Yes, I think we all are. We all need to take stock of what we've learned through this pandemic and hopefully figure out some better solutions in the long run. So anybody else have any more questions? I've got a couple more for him from the Chamber. But if you've got any out there, go ahead and put them in the chat. I'm going to ask you right now. Chris, what is your proudest public service accomplishment so far?
Um, I, I haven't really had one, I don't think. I mean, I, I helped with the, the school choir when my kids were in choir in elementary school. So I used to help set up all the speakers and things like that and just be, be around and be involved. Went to, you know, all kinds of field trips and things like that. Helped with the PTSA at the middle school. Was the vice president of the Washington Manor Music Boosters. Helped out there when I could. My daughters played instruments and sang in the choir. So being involved with that and meeting parents and listening to their concerns is actually how I met a couple people that were running for City Council about eight years ago, I want to say, you know, standing out front of the school, waiting to pick up our daughters and got to talk in and, you know, met someone that was running for City Council at that time. Had no idea, you know, I was worried about trying to get my kids, you know, through kindergarten and second grade. I wasn't worried about City Council at that point. So I think just volunteering at the school level is probably my proudest accomplishment right now.
Okay, so we have another question. "How many meetings of the City Council have you attended in the past? And do you attend community meetings in your district?"
Um, over the past two and a half years, I've been to, I don't know, a dozen or so, maybe 10 City Council meetings, a couple facilities, Transportation Committee meetings, Rules Committee meeting. I've spoken at some of these meetings. I've been, I've been to quite a few school board meetings, San Lorenzo School District School Board meetings over the past couple of years. Spoke at a few of those. I've been to the, the, the last four or five that I've attended over Zoom, have made me pretty, pretty happy and proud of the city of San Leandro. Because when I would attend the meetings in person before the pandemic, sometimes I would be the only person there in attendance at City Hall. Or my daughter was with me a few times, you know, other than city staff or elected officials. So when I attend these meetings over Zoom and there's, you know, over 100 attendees and 40 people wanting to speak and, you know, yeah, the meeting goes until after 2:00 in the morning. But I'm glad that people are getting involved and, and paying attention, really. Just pay attention to what's going on is, and, and if you don't agree or you have an idea, you need to speak up. I feel like me speaking up on some of the things that were on my mind or concerning me, some of them have been taken care of, actually. So, you know, it, it works. You just have to keep, keep at it. And, and I think it's much easier for people to do that through Zoom and, and attend these meetings through Zoom. So I might alienate some people that don't have the, the technology, but I think a lot more people are involved now than they were, you know, before this whole pandemic started.
Yeah, I agree. It does, it does lay itself to, to allowing people the time to, to be there at the meeting. They can do it from their home.
Yeah, and all the other, I have attended a few community meetings that the, the community has put together on the Manor Bowl project just to listen to their concerns. I spoke a little bit, but I didn't want to try to make it political, like, you know, trying to get their votes for running for City Council. I really wanted to hear what they were, what their concerns were. And there are some of my same concerns too. I'd like to see the bowling alley stay, personally, but that's just my, you know, selfish opinion.
So one of our last questions. "As a City Councilman, are you going to do what's good for the community? Or are you going to do what's personally good for you?"
Uh, I think what's personally good for me is going to be good for the community, but I'm going to listen to the residents and, and listen to what the residents feel is, is right, you know. I'm only one opinion. And I'm of the opinion, if you're the only one giving your opinion, then let's go for it. So, you know, people need to speak up and, and ask for what they want or what they believe in. And then, you know, it's, it's a give and take, you know. I have lots of ideas. Bounce ideas off of people and come up with a better one. You know, that's, that's the way I look at it. You know, there's always a better way to do something, especially if you have more hands helping you.
I agree. So we are almost out of time, Chris. So I'm going to give you the last minute or so to kind of just end this forum with any closing remarks that you might have for everybody on the call today.
I appreciate everybody coming. This is, I think, my second interview with Emily. Thank you. You made it comfortable for me, which is, I'm uncomfortable. I don't sit in front of a computer. I don't Zoom. I don't FaceTime, things like that. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the Chamber and everybody showing up today and the questions. Just get out and vote. I don't care if you vote for me. Just get out and vote, you know, and make sure that you tell your friends and neighbors to get out and vote. It's, it's important.
Okay, well, this has been wonderful. I hope everybody's got to know Chris a little bit better through this interview. So Chris, thank you very much. We are going to bring our next guest in. So thank you, Chris, and we will see you soon.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right.
So Natasha, we have our next guest. I believe we're probably going to let him on shortly.
All right, so Fred should be on with us.
Okay, there he is. And, okay, all right, he's no longer muted. So hello, Fred, everybody. Fred Simon is with us. He is also a candidate running for District 4. He currently serves on the Oreloma Sanitation District Board. Such a long name. I do tend to get tongue-tied over that title. So thank you for being here, Fred. So I can repeat some of the questions that you've put in the chat. If you'd like to enter new ones, as Fred, as we get to know Fred a little bit more, that's fine as well. So Fred, to get things started, hello. So Fred, to get things started, um, hello, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon.
And we're going to have you start with just letting everybody know a little bit about who you are and what brought you to run for city council here in San Leandro.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for having me this afternoon. My name's Fred Simon and I am running for city council of San Leandro to make San Leandro and to bring it to a better place in these challenging times. I'm a civil engineer. I'm a board member of Oroloma Sanitary District as well as a senior commissioner for city of San Leandro, and I understand how to solve problems. I'm African-American, raised in a biracial family, and I have experienced social injustices. Uh, I will use my problem-solving skills to work with all San Leandrians from all sides of the table, from different colors, different races, uh, different age groups to solve these problems that we're dealing with, uh, to make this a, uh, successful, improve our quality of life successfully and good equity, as well as improving our economics here in the city.
Thank you for that. So Fred, we have a few questions, um, that some folks have wanted both of our candidates to answer. So I'm going to ask you the first one. And the first question is, if you are elected, what will your principal focus be during your first year?
Okay, uh, my principal focus will be to get the city back into business, recovering from the COVID situation. Many businesses are closed, as we all know. Many folks are out of work, so I'm going to be looking at different programs and different opportunities to help our businesses get going and to keep our projects moving, to keep the Marina development moving. I really want to push the Bay Fair transit-oriented development. I know that's, we've got it ways off, but would like to get a schedule set on that and really keep projects moving. So that's going to be a big focus of mine is, is, is really getting us out of this COVID point where we're, seem to be a bit stalled out and to get us moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So Fred, one thing that I forgot to mention when we got started is we do have lots of questions to ask you, so we're going to give you about two minutes for each question. And if, um, right when the two minutes is up, Natasha's going to be keeping time. She'll mute you if you're over the two minutes. So no disrespect, we just want to keep things moving as, as we go. We only have you for half an hour, so we want to get as many questions answered.
Okay.
Okay? So, um, the next question is, what role do you see yourself taking as a city council member in addressing race and violence?
Uh, I see myself as a, um, a strong advocate for addressing this situation. As I mentioned, um, I am African-American. I do understand the issues that are out there, the social injustice issues, and I am going to play a big role on that. That would, you know, be one of my top priorities, just like giving, getting out of the COVID, is dealing with the, uh, social injustice issues that are out there and, uh, working with different groups, uh, from Black Lives Matter to the police, to the police unions, and working together to solve these problems. Uh, that's one issue that I want to, you know, put forth is uniting San Leandro and not so much division amongst our groups, but pulling us together to solve our problems.
Okay. So one of the questions is, what, what do you see? What are you going to do differently to make that happen?
One thing that I, I do support is having more open dialogue between the different groups. So with the police and the police union, having more open dialogue and understanding a bit more, what are the policies and procedures that are in place, that are being used? What are the de-escalation procedures? Get a better understanding of that and sharing that with the community as well. And if there are areas that are in need of improvement, working together with the police, working together with the unions, working together with the community, so we can, uh, come to some common ground. But I think better communication and understanding of procedures and protocols that are out there now will help.
Okay. So next question, Mr. Simon, with your experience at Oroloma, can you give an example of collaborating with other jurisdictions, for example, Caltrans or Union Pacific, to improve overall environmental wellness?
Yes, I, I am part of Curb. It's called Community United to Remove Blight. It's an organization formed by Nate Miley, the Alameda County Supervisor. And I do participate in those meetings as a representative for Oroloma. And in those meetings, we are, you know, having dialogues and discussions because of the illegal dumping that's going on and, and the amount of trash that's around. And I understand working with Caltrans is extremely difficult situation, as well as the railroad, in solving a lot of these problems. And I am starting to get into that, um, and that will be a top priority of mine once I'm on the city, is to further that and to continue those dialogues. Because I do see that as a big issue, as, um, there are, you know, unfortunately, a lot of fingers being, you know, pointed about this is my responsibility, this is your responsibility. But I think we should, we should kind of step back and say, this is all of our city. And if we're, you know, if someone's shortfalling, has a shortfall in one area, we, we step up as an agency to help. So that's what I'd like to do more is, rather than have all these siloed agencies, we come together to solve these problems.
Thank you for that. So one of my questions from the chamber, and I did ask our previous guests the same question. As development happens in our city, whether it is residential or commercial, there are some residents who are upset and concerned that development will change the character of the city or of a neighborhood, as well as trusting the current infrastructure. What are your thoughts about the city growing with the idea that perhaps it does change?
I fully support the city growing. It needs to grow. I have two kids, aged 10 and 14. They're going to need a home to, of their own. And we need growth, and I think we need substantial growth. What I'm seeing is a lot of 30 and 40 homes or developments coming in, and that is a drop in a bucket to what we need. We need the base, Bay Fair scale of development, which are, you know, 2,000 units. So that's going to be a big focus of mine, is, you know, getting units that will make a substantial impact in the number of, uh, you know, housing units that we have. I do support the community in being part of the dialogue and part of the process. I think that's very important for us to have support from the community's projects and to start early discussions with them. So I do support housing. However, I do also support community involvement and working with them. There's some give and take on both sides. I think that's really important.
Okay. And with not much land to develop in San Leandro, because we're, we're almost completely out, what's your position on height limits of new structures?
It depends where those structures are located. If the structures are located in, in an area like Bay Fair, which is a very wide open area next to a BART station, next to transportation, I think it's a perfect location to increase the height level much more than what San Leandro is used to. However, we would need to get the community involved early on, and we could really beautify the area, because, uh, Bay Fair needs help. There's a huge homeless issue at Bay Fair. The residents are not happy with why the neighborhoods are over there. So I'd like to work with the neighbors. I'd like to work with the developers and the city to, uh, increase our housing, to our height limits there.
Okay, and so you said one of your principal focuses would be, um, getting us back into business and recovering from the pandemic. So with that in mind, I'll ask you this question. With the downturn in the economy and sales tax revenue down for the city, what ideas do you have to increase revenue and preserve city services?
Well, in, in the short term, to get us through this, this pandemic and this, you know, disaster really, what we're dealing with, is the city does have some reserves. So I would look for that as a short-term bridge to, uh, offer grants or, or loans or something to get businesses going until we can get people out and to spend money. So that would be kind of the first step to bridge the gap. But that's not a long-term option. We're going to have increased interest rates if our reserves drop too low, so it's important that is a short, you know, short-term fix. But for more, longer-term fixes, uh, would, you know, work with our community development department to, uh, come up with different, either promotions or ways to get folks comfortable with coming out. Having, we live in a Mediterranean, Mediterranean climate, so we have, we're fortunate that we can get outdoor, you know, eating, outdoor dining, maybe even some, you know, outdoor haircuts, things like that that are happening now. So I think thinking differently, thinking out of the box while we're in the COVID, to, uh, just get more opportunities to open business in the COVID environment with social distancing.
Okay, thank you for that. We did have a question emailed to us from one of our members, and I'm going to go ahead and ask you that question now, and I'll just read it just as the way it was emailed to us. It says, "Small businesses in San Leandro are suffering. There's a shortage of employees. There's been shoplifting and theft. There's homelessness. What are your ideas to resolve these issues?"
Let's see, uh, shoplifting, homelessness, uh, there's a lot of issues out there. One thing that I want to do is really tackle the homelessness situation. And that, you know, can lend itself into several different improvements. Uh, one is to, you know, clean up the areas. If we can actually have homeless people help us in walking and campaigning around the areas in the Bay Fair, for example. Uh, I did meet a homeless gentleman that's working, you know, his name is Andy. He's working at the 7-Eleven right there at Halcyon and Hisbarian. And he's got a job, so he's, he's helping to clean up the area, and he's getting a little money to, you know, help himself as well as to help the business right there. So that's kind of a short-term, you know, small instance. But big, big picture from a homeless situation is expanding our programs to help with the mental health issues, to help with the drug addiction, and really expanding how we are handling homeless rather than, you know, simple vouchers for housing.
Okay.
As far as shoplifting and things like that, uh, I think we're going to have to have more, uh, involvement with, you know, we have to have a relationship with our police department. We need our police. We have to have a relationship with them, with our community, and, uh, we all have to become united. And that's kind of my theme is, is putting us all together, because this is a tough situation and we have to really work together.
So one of the questions is that, um, that small businesses did suffer big losses due to the looting that happened in San Leandro. And it was felt that the city of San Leandro did not do enough to help with those businesses. So what would you do differently, had you been in office at a time like that?
I would say the first thing I would do is get out and listen and hear what the concerns are from the businesses right away. And what do they need to get back on their feet? And just have a really clear understanding quickly, I mean, like, within a matter of days to do this. Because I know that they've got employees they need to pay, they've got loans they need to pay. So have a really good, good understanding what the impacts are. And then come up with some, you know, alternate funding options. I know that there's some grants that were given that were taken from the facade improvement to some businesses, but not all. So I would look for, you know, other opportunities to, to fund those that didn't, didn't get the funding. Like I mentioned, the reserves, you know, earlier, that's something I think to consider is to help, you know, help our city, to help our businesses to keep, to keep moving forward.
So you help get the reserves and help businesses from that funding?
That's something I would consider. I would, you know, talk to our council members, if it's a loan, if it's a grant, however it would work. But if our businesses are starting to, you know, close up and go away, that's not a good option for the city, long-term. You know, having abandoned businesses is, is not helping anything. So I would look at, I'd say all options, all options are on the table to help keep our businesses going and come up with ideas for, you know, that's a short-term solution, but then, you know, long-term, we need to, you know, get folks shopping again so that they could spend money. So we've got the short-term solution, and then, you know, the long-term is getting folks back into the stores.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you a question that we had, um, earlier. Uh, let me find it right here. If you could direct $1.7 million in the city's budget, what would your priority be? Where do you think money can make the most difference?
I, I think the first, you know, issue that we have to deal with are two of them, two issues. You know, like we talked about in the beginning of the call here, is one is get the COVID situation to help. The second is dealing with the, uh, social injustice issues and some of the issues we're having with the police department. So a portion of that money, I think, should be reallocated to, uh, better ways to de-escalate a, uh, you know, fatal or a potential fatal or lethal weapon situation. We should look at mental, mental health situation, mental health, different mental health remedies, uh, bringing folks in that are specialized in that. So I think some money should go to there. I think also maybe a portion of that money, we should look at from the COVID, you know, getting businesses some assistance. And we'll have to see, you know, how that plays out, you know, whether it's a grant, whether it's loans. But we just can't have businesses closed up, to me, that the city will continue to decline if that's the situation.
Thank you for that. What is your proudest public service accomplishment so far?
I would say my, my proudest service, it's a, it's a small one, but my proudest service moment would be when I was elected to Oroloma Sanitary District. One of my key focuses was to have more public participation. And like I mentioned in the beginning of this meeting, we all have to work together. And all of the Oroloma meetings were in the daytime before I became elected. And I pushed to have meetings in the evening so the public could participate. So now when we have key meetings such as discussions on rate increases or other important matters like that, those meetings are now held in the evening so that working families can attend. So that was really important to me, and I, I feel real, you know, proud that I was able to push that to happen.
Yes, it does make a difference with participation. And speaking of that, how many city council meetings have you attended? And do you attend community meetings in your district?
I've been attending city council meetings for 20 years. I am a community activist here in San Leandro, and when I first bought my home, my wife and I and, you know, many neighbors, and we, we really stood up when we saw injustices occurring. So I was going to city council meetings where we packed the city hall room into the overflow room. Uh, so I've been to many city council meetings over the years. As far as community meetings, I'm a senior commissioner for the city of San Leandro, so monthly I'm with my, my fellow senior commissioners, helping with, uh, age-friendly initiative issues such as transportation, helping with health, healthcare and other senior important items. And from the Zoom perspective, I have been attending recent senior, excuse me, recent city council meetings on Zoom.
Yes, I was saying Zoom has definitely opened up the city council meetings to a lot more attendees, so that's been, been nice. And we have one more question. Mr. Simon, speaking of rate increases, talk about a vote that you made that was in the best interest of Oroloma, but made your neighbors angry because they would have to pay more. What did you say to the neighbors in response? Did you talk to them prior to the vote? What did you say to the neighbors in response? Did you talk to them prior to the vote?
I would say I haven't had any um angry rate payers. Uh, Oreloma's rates are extremely low at this time. I believe the, the lowest in the entire, you know, region in this area. And one thing we're looking at is increasing our rates. It's, it's needed because we have to invest in our infrastructure. We do have a backlog of repairs of mains that need to be made, and that's something that we are, you know, actively, you know, looking at different options to increase rates. So whether it's for main replacements or if it's for uh our re, garbage and recycling rates to get new cans, I see it very important, not just as a rate increase, but as an investment in our infrastructure and an investment in our community. Uh, as far as talking to residents and talking to neighbors, um I do talk to my, you know, constituents that are in my neighborhood, that I, that I live nearby and, that live nearby. And with our rates so low, uh many of them feel that it's a good, it's a good investment. It's a good value to invest in our infrastructure and, and not just keep things low, but to keep them low. So I, I believe very, very firmly in, in being upfront and open and, and not keeping rates low artificially, just to keep them low, but to increase them when you need them to invest in your infrastructure.
Wonderful. So we have a few more minutes left. We don't have any new questions. So Fred, I'm gonna give you about two minutes for any closing thoughts or words that you want to share with everybody that's on the call.
Okay. Again, thank you for the opportunity of having me um here with the chamber comments. I look forward to your support. I really want to give it my all to, to do my best to improve San Leandro. We do have some serious challenges ahead, extremely serious. The pandemic that we all know about, uh social justice issues. You know, now we've got wildfires that are, you know, impacting our health and, you know, you walk outside, you don't know if it's day or night. So there's a number of challenges that are out there, and, and I'm up for the challenges. And I want to work with people and, you know, have productive dialogue and, and, you know, listen to all ideas. And, you know, welcome input. So I, I really am excited about this opportunity. I think we, we have some good momentum and we're heading in the right direction, and I would like to continue that and um do my best for the city. I've, I've been, lived here 25 years. Like I mentioned, I have two kids and, and I really want to make this a great place. I plan on being here for a very long time, and we have, we have a gym in here in San Leandro, and we can really make this a great place. So I look forward to your support.
Well, thank you for being here. It's, it's been great getting to know you through this. I, this is our second time meeting up, so thank you for being here. And to everybody that is on the call, thank you all. I just want to remind you again that the San Leandro Chamber does have a political action committee. You're not able to cast a vote in San Leandro. Perhaps you will consider contributing to the political action committee. Uh, we'll get more information out to everybody about that and how to go about it. And next week on September 29th, we are gonna hear from Ed Hernandez and Brian Azvedo, who are running in District Two. So please join us again next week. And again, thank you Fred for being here, and thank you to everybody that logged on today. You guys have a good rest of your day. Bye bye.